Under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And that takes us to item number three, public participation. If there's anyone from the public wishing to address the board, please step forward. Otherwise, we will close public participation and move on to our budget presentations. The first one of which is Merrimack Middle School. I would invite to the table Principal Adam Carragher and Assistant Principal Shawna DeMore. Welcome.
Thank you Chairman Ortega and all members of the board as we come together to meet in this nice snowy evening. The Merrimack Middle School budget proposal for 2016-17 shows a continued commitment to the district logic model through attention to literacy, numeracy, technology, and school climate and safety. This proposal includes the third installment of a five-year plan to replace worn-out science lab and art room stools. Funds are also requested to create an interschoolastic volleyball team at Merrimack Middle School. This increases athletic transportation, athletic supplies, and the athletic officials, which are adjusted to reflect the amount needed to support the program. Supply accounts, as always, are dependent upon per pupil expenditures. Board Member Schneider had inquired about the details of adding sport as it relates to the timing, as well as what steps have been taken to ensure that there's adequate participation during the first year of this sport and to make sure that a team can successfully be fielded. In order to be in the schedule for the 2016-17 school year, we would need to let the Tri-County Athletic Association know our intentions by the end of February. From that point, we would be able to do our scheduling in advance. If we are unable to inform them in February, we would actually be able to create a schedule by coordinating that directly through the schools. Related to the adequate participation, we know that there is an interest in this building as we have had a very vibrant intramural program for volleyball. This opportunity would be open to students in both the seventh as well as the eighth grade, and we would have sign-ups in the spring, both at the middle school as well as at the upper elementary school, as those will be students who are coming in. We will, as we have in the past, promote the various athletic as well as the co-curricular activities that the MMS students have at the parent evening, which occurs in the spring. A volleyball program at the middle school would also provide a very unique experience for our students, as it is not a program that is supported at this age group by an outside organization in a competitive level. I believe that through this type of promotion and the awareness that the program that has been raised by the success of the Merrimack High School program, that we would have enough students to field a team for the 16-17 school year. Board Member Schneider also asked, aside from music, the all-state competition, are there any other co-curricular teams that require transportation budget? I would say while we do have a variety of different clubs such as First Lego League, Destination Imagination, Guitar Club, Sewing Club, at this point, we have not had a situation where transportation funds were needed. Board Member Schneider also inquired about the transportation costs for each of the sports, similar to what was provided by the high school. I believe that has been provided to the board for review. In the future, we will insert this information under the appropriate account. Vice Chair Barnes also inquired as to the gifted and talented program and the number of students impacted by this funding. My understanding is the question was addressed by our Assistant Superintendent at the last meeting. At this time, if there are any questions or any information which we might be able to provide for you to help clarify, we would be happy to do our best.
Thank you, Mr. Carragher. Are there any further questions from the board? Mr. Powell.
I just have one quick question, something I noticed just now. On page one, under Testing and Scoring, there's approximately a $2,800 increase regarding testing materials. Is that due to the new smarter balanced testing?
That is not due to the smarter balanced testing. It's more about the progress monitoring tool and being able to assess in a similar way that the elementary schools are currently doing and we're piloting at this point.
Is this going to be a one-time charge, or is this what we can expect from this point out?
This would be an annual.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I will thank you for briefly attending our meeting and braving the elements to do so, but very much we do appreciate the work that you put into the budget and for the presentation tonight.
Thank you much.
Thank you. Safe ride home.
Thank you.
And that will take us to the budget presentation for Central Office, and I will look to our Superintendent Marge Chaffrey, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Mark McLaughlin, and Business Administrator Mr. Matt Chevanel.
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask Matt if he will cover our overview, and then he will turn it back to me for the specific question to ask.
Thank you very much. The district budget is really kind of misnomer because it's just a misnomer because it doesn't include everything that one would associate with like a district office. It includes everything else that's not in every other buddy's budget, like the benefits, all contractual obligations according to both master agreements, legal services, audit services. It contains funds for software such as Budget Sense, which produces the budget books and which produces payroll and fund accounting and everything as I just stated. It also includes funds for the school messaging service that we have, as well as our bandwidth, programs like COP Sync, which we partnered with the Merrimack Police Department. It also includes services such as we're initiating for the online student registration program. It also is going to be containing some new modules that we're plugging into Power School, which is also contained in this budget to bring enhancements to that system. We're really, this year, next year, and the year after is the year we're really going to tap into the power of Power School. No pun intended or sales pitch sounding kind of thing, but it's just the way it came out. We are fortunate in this year with all the increases in the capital items in the maintenance budget, that in the district budget, the New Hampshire retirement rates didn't go up. When they were set for 15-16, they were also set for 16-17, and that held true. So it was a two-year rate cycle, so you won't see any increase in the rates for New Hampshire retirement. An angel just got its wings. Anyway, so it's an old movie. So anyway, so that's very fortunate for us that we didn't get the huge jump in retirement. I think you'll see retirement for support staff go up a little bit because there was a pay increase involved, and that's about it. That was the only function of that increase. You also didn't see because you had the foresight a year or so, or two years ago, to renegotiate the transportation contract. So the $2 million plus that we're paying for transportation is the same as what we're paying this year in 15-16. So that's not an increase you have to worry about. So that really worked in our favor. We also have bonded debt in here. We didn't drop a bond issue or anything this year. However, our bond interest decreases every year to the tune of around $68,000 to $70,000. So that's something that we realize the savings in. The only real increase we did have, however, it wasn't as dramatic it is an increase as it could have been, was in the area of health insurance. You recall, we had a 12.2% increase in the guaranteed maximum rate with a line item of about $10 million. You'd think automatically if you just do the calculation, oh my gosh, there's a million dollars. Well, when we went through and did it, we looked at every single person individually and what plan they're currently taking, as opposed to what they were taking in years prior. And so we mapped that all out, did a brand-new calculation on it, and come to find out because of the shifting in how people take their health insurance away from other plans, towards the lower-cost plans, that the net increase was $295,000. So instead of a million, you're looking at a hit of $295,000, which is still significant in and of itself, but basically, we could have been in a situation where we had a larger increase in health insurance, we could have had a transportation increase, we could have had a New Hampshire retirement increase, and all those still things building upon the big capital improvement projects that we want to go forward with in this budget. So in a nutshell, that is the district budget, and I consider it somewhat good news. There is an increase, but the increase isn't as dramatic as it could have been. Thank you.
And Vice Chair Barnes asked two questions. The first one has to do with the retirement incentive, which you'll find on page one. She says, "Please explain how the budget calculation for the incentive is established by the first seven eligible employees or the highest salaries of eligible employees," noticing the 24-14-15 line item was overspent. So the first thing I want to say is that this year, we level-funded that item on purpose because you're in the midst of contract negotiations, so we weren't sure how that was going to turn out. So just like salary accounts, we just level-funded it. Normally, because persons who are interested in the retirement incentive have to submit their letter by November 15th, we are cognizant of who the top seven are, so we take those seven individuals and we actually calculate exactly what they're going to get. If you see an expense that's different than that, more than likely, it means that we went down the list and we went to other people and their calculation was different. The second question by Vice Chair Barnes had to do with advertising, which you would find on page 10. The question is, "With internet resources increasing for things like job search, why is this account not decreasing?" That is a very good question, because we use a combination of things. We use New Hampshire EdJobs.com for most of our professional positions, and that serves us quite well, as well as AppleTrack. Those are two online sources. However, we have our greatest turnover in support staff, specifically for food service positions, custodians, mechanics, our adult ed coordinator, and we find that these people don't necessarily have a computer, they don't go online and look for things. And so the Nashua Telegraph, the union leader, and the Concord Monitor help us a great deal in that. We track it on a monthly basis, and Ed runs between 250 to 450, depending on what we say. So we really use a combination, and if you look in your budget books over the last few years, we've been very consistent around $20,000. Also, if we have a professional position like an assistant principal or a principal, then very often, we will use a combination, again, of the paper and online, because sometimes we've been able to net a person through the newspaper. So we're very good about tracking that. It was a good question. I believe those were the only questions that were asked, and so, again, I would say, do any of you have a question that any one of the three of us might be able to answer?
Mr. Marcus.
I only just noticed it now, so I apologize if I'm putting you on the spot, but on page seven, under Transportation, when you break down the numbering costs of the buses, it says that there is one late bus, and currently, there are two late buses running every day for the district. So is the one a placeholder for the value, or are you reducing it from two buses to one?
No, we're not reducing. There are two late buses, but we should say one late run, basically, even though there are two.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Good question.
Let me make a note of that.
Yeah. Any other questions from the board? I would just make an observation as it relates to the healthcare costs. Past boards had worked, have worked, we have worked, to move the district's contribution toward employee healthcare from the middle-tier plan to the lower-cost plan, and as such, made employee contributions to those higher-cost plans more expensive. And I think what we're seeing are the fruits of those efforts. The fact that people have self-selected to lower-cost plans has done exactly what those boards intended, which is to drive costs down for the district and to protect us over long-term health care increases, and so I'm quite heartened to see what was done there. So thank you for the presentation. Mr. Powell.
I also just wanted to make a comment on something that Matt had said earlier regarding the transportation expense in the bus contract. I think he's selling himself short and giving us too much credit on saying that we were foresighted. If it hadn't been for him bringing this opportunity forward to us, obviously, we wouldn't have known that it was available. So Matt, thank you for negotiating that, taking the lead on that, and allowing us to level fund that for the coming budget year.
Excellent point. Thank you. All right. That will take us now to item number five, proposed warrant articles. In our packets, we have two of what will be likely four warrant articles to go on the ballot in April. The first two, which we'll review, and I'll turn this over to Matt, are related to a presentation we received from the trustees of the trust funds, asking us to cross our Ts and dot our Is, saying explicitly from the town that it's okay to take the management fees for those trust funds directly from the trust fund itself, as opposed to the general fund. And then the second one is a warrant article to begin to replenish the District Repair Capital Reserve Fund. As you know, we took money away from that in order to replace the bleachers. We put a little bit of money back in last year, but that's probably still underfunded, and I'll leave it to Mr. Chevanel to talk about the other, the details. The other warrant articles that will go on the ballot, as was mentioned, we're currently in negotiations with the MTA, the Merrimack Teachers Association, and so there will be a warrant article forthcoming that will take up on that. And then lastly, obviously, the operating budget. As it relates to these two articles and our discussion tonight, the intent is not to vote on these articles. We'll do that as a whole when we have them all. The intent tonight is really to review the content. If there is any additional information the board feels it needs as it relates to any of these, we should have that discussion. If there are changes in terms of the content, perhaps the amounts related to the Capital Reserve Fund, simply as an example, that's something we should probably discuss before moving forward, but we're not actually voting the warrants in terms of school board approval tonight. Does that make sense? So taking no credit, Vice Chair Barnes.
Well, the only question I have in theory before we get into the actual warrant articles are, have these been reviewed by legal counsel before they came to us?
Article one was written by Kathy Peel.
So she probably is.
So she, after, when the trustees raised this up, I felt it important to send it off to her, because that would be helpful to the trustees as well. So her writing was given to you and to them. As far as Article two, this is in a draft state. Matt put this together based on other warrants that he has written, and so we're very interested, especially in the amount, because we put something out for your consideration, but we're very interested in that. When you see the entire warrant placed before you with all of the articles, they will have been reviewed by counsel before it comes to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chevanel.
Would you like me to read these aloud, or?
Please.
Okay.
Or, yeah.
Yeah. For the record. Article one concerns, and this is not the way it's going to appear on the ballot, and I'm just saying Article one because it's the first one I'm talking about tonight, but the first article dealing with the trustees, "Shall the district vote pursuant to RSA 35: 9-A to authorize the trustee of trust funds to charge any contractual management expenses incurred for the management of any district capital reserve funds for which the trustees have been granted custody pursuant to RSA 35:2 against the capital reserve funds involved, rather than paying such expenses from the district general funds. Such authority shall remain in effect until rescinded by vote of the school district, which shall not occur within five years from the date of this original authorization." This is majority vote required. It would be one that the board would vote on. There's no appropriation here, so it's not a budget committee warrant article. However, this kind of tightens up what is our current practice. Management fees that are associated with investments due to the trustees having control and authorization to have control of our money has always been deducted from any sort of income or proceeds, and the net is what is available to us after those fees have been charged. We've never paid for these out of the general fund. The town has done the same thing because of their town charter. They could just go ahead and vote this in because they have the authority to do so. Us, the school district not operating under a town charter, does not have that same authority. So therefore, if we want to be aligned with them and to do what I think is the prudent thing to do, you would have this as a warrant article on your ballot and perhaps during deliberations, Mr. Christiansen could come forward as the trustee to kind of explain it a little bit better than I just did. But that is the first one we have for your consideration.
I thought you did. Fantastic. Mr. Powell.
Well, you answered one question. I was going to ask you if the trustees were going to, I think you, present it or us, but I do have a question. What is the, I hate the way I'm going to say this, what is the definition of the school district? And the school district may not, or it can be rescinded by the vote of the school district. Are we talking about the governing body, or are we talking about the school board?
Town meeting.
Legislative body.
The legislative body?
Yep.
Okay. Because I don't know if that's 100% clear.
It wasn't, and that's why the superintendent sent it to Attorney Peel for clarification, which was why this came back the way that it was. And the opinion of the attorney was that the school board is not the authority in terms of putting.
Oh, that's not my question.
Oh, okay.
Oh, no, no, that's not my question. It's, "School district" is not clear. The term "school district" is not clear. That doesn't tell me that it has to be town meeting or legislative body.
Yeah, so, but it, that's.
I know that's what the intention is, but.
And that's what the RSAs will call the district. A district vote, "Shall the district vote," right?
Okay.
That's the town people.
Okay.
On behalf of the district, right? The, not the governing body, but the district as a whole, right?
I guess it's just the way the RSAs are, they refer to, in one part, they refer to it as the legislative body, and in the other part, obviously, they do this.
Superintendent.
So I would say that we can share this with Attorney Peel, because you read it cold, without any presentation. If it can't be changed legally, then in the voter's guide, we need to be clear, and we will write a paragraph about what does it mean, translated, which helps us a lot hugely.
I would appreciate that, because I think that, I think that needs to be clear, that it's not just the will of five, but the will of the town that would make this change if that's what's going to happen farther down the road.
Okay. Ms. Gualy, you may have her hand up, and then Mr. Schneider.
Yeah, real quick, I had the same concern. I immediately circled it, and it wasn't clear to me either, but I like the suggestion of adding it to the voter's guide, so it is clear to those that, so they can make an educated vote.
Sure. Mr. Schneider.
So even within the warrant article itself, it's conflicting, because it says, "Shall the district vote," and at the bottom, it says, "Rescinded by vote of the school district." So we should make those two at least the same, so people could understand that you're, that the school district is voting and the school district can rescind, or the district, whatever phrase I would, I'd like it to book in, if we could.
Okay.
Because then, because then somebody say, "Well, what's the school district?" And then if they look at the article, they would say, "Oh, the school district vote," for example, so.
Yeah, I guess I'm less, I appreciate people are confused. Every warrant article we put up says, "Shall the district," and then people vote on it as the district.
Right, but if it's.
Maybe I've been doing this too long.
So here you've got people that have been down this rodeo before.
Right.
That are looking at this, asking for a definition, so maybe if we could add a word or just something to clarify.
Okay. Yep. So noted. Superintendent.
So we'll ask her to look at it again. We'll put it in the voter's guide, and she has been contracted to be with us that night. So if we need it explained, she, not Allison Menutally, or whatever.
At deliberative.
We'll be at deliberative session.
Excellent. Anything else on Article one, or what's currently being called Article one? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to Article two.
Okay. The article currently known as Article two is a special warrant article because it involves capital reserve funds, and it states, "Shall the district raise and appropriate an amount up to $100,000 or 10% of the unencumbered surplus remaining at the end of the fiscal year 2015-2016, whichever amount is less, and to transfer that amount to the school district repair capital reserve fund. Majority vote required. This will have to be acted upon if it goes forward by the school board, and then it would have to be acted upon by the budget committee, because it contains an appropriation." So in essence, what you're looking at doing is if you have a million-dollar surplus, you would take $100,000 and put it in the repair fund. If you have less than a million-dollar surplus, let's say it's $500,000, then you would only have $50,000 or 10%. So what it's doing is, it's at least allowing you a safeguard that you're going to have at least $900,000 to return to the taxpayers. I chose the 10% figure just off the top of my head. It's up to you to decide what you want it to say, or if you want to go forward with this at all, or the amount to be raised and appropriated. Currently, right now, as of June 30, there was $27,000 in that fund, but upon further review and going back and looking at the warrant that we voted upon last April, there was a warrant article that dissolved the asbestos capital reserve fund for $50,000, and that money is supposed to be put into this reserve fund. That money hasn't been transferred yet, but you'll be getting a letter to authorize the trustees to make that transaction. So in that repair fund, there will be shortly $77,000. In the past, we've spent close to $100,000 on bleachers. I recall, a few years ago, we spent around $55,000 from it on the roadway going down to the lower ball field because it was eroding away and it was just slowly dissipating, because all the parking lot drains in Merrimack High School connect into one point, and that point is the. And that point is the Easterly, the Easterly side of the building. And it goes into one giant culvert pipe which goes down that roadway. So we had to repair the roadway, create a soil to capture all the, the rainwater that came from all the roof drains in the parking lot and repair it. There's been several other entrances we've used that fund. And seventy-seven thousand dollars, we feel, is a little bit shy of where we would like it to be. Another hundred thousand dollars would give us a comfort level. But that, that's up to you and your consideration to ultimately make that decision.
Wonderful. Hands are going up. Mr. Powell and Ms. Gualyumi.
Matt, can you remind us, when we started this fund, how much did we seed it with?
Seated it with around fifty thousand dollars.
And what's the, what's the highest balance that we've had?
Probably, I would say, around a hundred thousand. I haven't seen it much over a hundred thousand. Hundred and fifty? Yeah, okay.
Okay. And one last question. Do we have any other capital, stale capital reserve funds that we might be able to close out?
No, the last one was the asbestos.
Got it.
Thank you. Ms. Gualyumi.
My question was along the same vein, which is, what would be the average, let's say, over the last five years of what's been in that account?
Well, the high. I'm sorry, the, the high point, probably it's ranged. You know, it went down to twenty-seven, the, the average, probably around seventy-five, I would say, rough guess, over the last five years or so.
So right now, once this transfer happens from the last year to be seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven thousand, correct.
And this would, the hundred thousand would put us higher than we've, we've been in a long time.
Yeah, by around twenty-something. So, you know, that, that's an item you want to look at.
Okay.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Barnes.
I think that one thing we talked about our last meeting was the planning board's recommendations regarding the asbestos abatement moving up and the bleachers for the guest, the guest bleachers at Merrimack High School moving up. And those are ones that, obviously, they're aged, asbestos is aged. And of course, it's being looked at very closely. But we've had to make some changes over the years in our asbestos abatement based upon other areas with asbestos calling for more attention. So when it comes to the fact that we have those two projects that at this point, we are putting off in our budget, that having that, at least that hundred thousand dollars on top of the seventy-seven thousand makes sense. Because if we had to do asbestos abatement and it was not budgeted, but was necessary based on safety reasons, that could clean it up in one, one project alone. So, you know, at this point, we have, we've been given assurances that it's in good shape. But all things have changed, you know, with short notice in the last few years. Things like our bleachers, things like the roof of the middle school. So I'd rather we were prepared for surprises. And obviously, Storm Sandy was a huge surprise for us. But, and that had some costs involved as well from that fund. So I do think that having no, and that's the reminder I like to make to the, to the townspeople every year is we don't have a reserve like a town would have a reserve. It all goes back to the taxpayer. So this is kind of like, you know, you're driving an old car and you don't have any money put aside in case it breaks with a major, like, if the engine dies. So, you know, you need to make sure we have money in the bank to cover that. And with the resources that we have, it's, we definitely want to make sure we aren't coming up with any big financial surprises. So this is something I'm very comfortable with. I hope the, the rest of the board feels the same way. But this is, those are two examples of where we need to be prepared, so.
Mr. Schneider.
So I agree, we need to seed some money into this. I'm a little less concerned about the two projects that we, that were proposed that were moving into the following budget year, the seventeen, eighteen year. Because both of those are pretty well monitored and we've, we've had assurances that they're not on a hairy edge or anything like that. My thought was, in looking at this and listening to the conversation, just to throw a conversation starter out here, is that I, I would support if we did seventy-five thousand opposed to a hundred, just to sort of, because then that would match the highest total we've had in that account in its history, and it leaves us at that level. Now, it's, it's always a crap shoot. I mean, we don't know. It may not spend, it may spend over the amount. I believe that if we have to do asbestos abatement, it's even more than what the total between a hundred plus the seventy-seven thousand would be. So we don't even have enough to cover that. So it's, it's mostly just say, maybe ramp it back just a little bit. Conceptually, I don't disagree with the methodology.
Actually, we haven't heard on this topic from Ms. Gualyumi, and then we'll come back to Vice Chair Barnes.
Okay. I agree with Andy. I had actually just written down one fifty K. I'd, I'd rather take it in two steps and build it up to what would be the highest, I guess, it's ever been. And the next year, look at building it again in a, in a two-step process versus all this year. So, you know, the seventy-five thousand or seventy-three to get it to one fifty K would be what, what I would be most supportive of.
Vice Chair Barnes.
And to that end, I was thinking that number as well. But when I'm looking at that extra twenty-seven thousand, I look at that as if, if we had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It was before our time on the board, Chris. We've been on the board for over six years, well, almost six years, very close to six years. That being said, a lot of costs have gone up in the last six years. So I look at that twenty-seven thousand difference as the difference in what it may have cost when we were at the pinnacle of our, of that account's balance. So I, I'd like to see a little buffer, honestly, than what we had in our best day. Because our best day was also a long time ago and probably a lot cheaper.
And I would add that I think that historically, we've probably not done an adequate job in properly funding these reserve counts. As I look at all of the assets that we have in the district, you know, replacing a bleacher was all we could do, right? If it was something bigger than a bleacher, we wouldn't have had the money to actually fix it, right? So imagine the HVAC unit on the roof actually failing at the high school. Granted, we're planning for that and moving it forward. But it's an example of one of the assets in the district for potential of failure. And so, you know, that's a four hundred fifty thousand dollar unit, five hundred fifty. So you further see my point. So I think, you know, this article, whether it's, you know, we begin to build it back up, I think future boards ought to also look at target amounts that go beyond what we've historically had. Because, I mean, this district, you know, we've got ten acres of roofs with all the equipment that goes along with it. And I think, you know, if an, an emergency comes up, we're going to be limited in terms of the savings that we have to actually deal with it. Taking all that on in one year is not something I would recommend. And what amount we settle on for being able to do this year, just like someone would do sitting at their kitchen table and determining the family budget and what can, what can we set aside, I think is the right discussion to have. But I don't think one fifty is the target long-term for the fund. I'm sorry? Soss, yeah. In terms, in terms of the amount for this year, we should probably, before we move forward much more though, at least get some consensus around what we think that amount ought to be. Mr. Powell.
I, I, I agree with both yourself and the vice chair that we need to take steps to, to get that fund replenished. I'm fine with doing a hundred thousand dollars now. I'm thinking back to Hurricane Sandy, when we had the issue in the Blue House. We had to, to, to take money from there. You know, heaven forbid that something happens at one of the buildings during the winter and there's an ice dam and a roof has an issue. You know, it's just, we do need to build it up. What is that ultimate goal? You know, I don't know. Off the top of my head, I'm thinking two fifty. But that would be something that maybe Matt could look into to, to kind of get a, a feel of what other districts are doing or what the, the agreed way of, of budgeting for that is. As far as this year, I'm, I'm fine with the hundred thousand or ten percent, you know, whichever comes first.
Mr. Schneider.
At the end of the day, I will vote with the board on this article to make sure that we're in lockstep. But I will add that this year, with the capital budget the way it is and the other warrants, especially the contract that are coming up, I'm looking for ways to even save twenty-five thousand dollars for the taxpayers in a year. And if we're gonna look at this as a multi-year, maybe we can have a little more stepwise function. Because twenty-five thousand does, in the grand scheme, I get it. But that's, that's sort of my mindset of what I'm looking at right now.
Understood. Well-intentioned. Vice Chair Barnes.
And had the request been to add a hundred thousand dollars in the operating budget, I'd be completely in lockstep with you on that. But the fact that we're asking about surplus funds, ten percent or a hundred thousand dollars. So that being said, it's not, it's money that, yes, it would have gone back to taxpayers in lump sum. But it's not, we're asking them to add that to the bottom line of our, of our operating budget. So had it been that, I'd probably have been a lot more conservative as well. But when you talk about a hundred thousand dollars and how much it's gonna cost to do some repairs and how, what are we gonna have to do if a repair comes to us in excess of the amount that we have in that account? We're, we're playing a little risk, and I'm not sure that that's, you know, that's healthy for the district to take on not having a, a safety net for, for big infrastructure projects that, that could come our way. I mean, it's the backbone of what operates our district is the facilities. So and if, if they go down, we have problems, big problems. So I'd rather we have something. And I don't think a hundred and seventy-seven thousand is gonna do that, mind you. But if we ever have a major issue, then we have to be able to respond to it. So I think we need to make sure we're responsible in that.
Mr. Powell.
Shannon just made, said a word that made me think. The facilities are the backbone of the district. Now that we're moving more technologically forward, if there was some sort of failure in our technological infrastructure, would that be something that would be covered under this as well? It, it doesn't say building, it says district repair.
If there was a situation where we had a major hardware catastrophe that ceased us to operate the way we need to operate, I would definitely come looking at this fund for that.
Okay. I, I, it just, it popped in in this discussion.
Good point.
So, you know, not only are we talking bricks and mortar, but we also need to be thinking. Exactly. Because we, we, you know, we keep migrating more and more towards that. So just, just food for thought when we're thinking about what dollar amount we're looking at in the long run.
Yeah, for instance, we, we virtualize a lot of things. I say that word, do I know exactly what it means? No, I'll be honest with you, I don't. But it's been explained to me, but Nancy knows, and that's all that matters. And, you know, we have a, a sand, a storage, a, a storage. Area network, thank you very much. A sand. And the, the sand cost us, when we bought it years ago, cost around sixty-five thousand dollars. That sand goes down, you know, you know, that, that's, that's a lot of money right then and there that we would have to replace one way or another. So there is some, we have moved away from the, you know, let's set up a computer for two thousand dollars and that's our server for file and print and management and whatnot. You know, we've, we've gotten into the, the big leagues as far as this is concerned. Bless you. And so that would be an area where I would definitely, and I hadn't really thought about it in that light. And thanks for bringing that up.
Thanks, Shannon.
That's a, that's definitely an area that I would, I would look towards. Because that stuff is mission critical.
So that might be something to, when you're figuring out the calculation of what our target is, that should probably be something you want to think of.
Okay. So, yes, Ms. Gualyumi.
You know, I guess it comes down to what's the prudent amount of money to set aside. You know, I agree that the hundred and fifty isn't the end-all, be-all. But my concern is, you know, we're, we have a, a lot of capital projects with this budget, an operating budget that is a higher percent than what we've seen over the last at least four years, I believe. And then we also will have the warrant that we'll be putting on. And then this is another hundred thousand dollars. So I, I kind of agree with Andy in that, you know, this, like the seventy-five for some reason just seems like the best of all worlds. It's building up the fund, not all in one year, but yet making a good, you know, step towards managing our risk and being a little, I don't know, I just feel like I'm really sensitive to what's gonna hit the ballot.
I understand. We all are, yeah. Okay, so why don't we do this? When, when we actually go to move these warrants, let, let's use that discussion for settling on the amount. It may also give us an opportunity for some additional analysis in terms of what we think the, you know, target balance ought to be, right? And therefore, how long, right, might the future boards take in order to build this toward that target? So why don't we, just when we move the article, we'll deal with the, the wording of the article as well. Great. And that will take us to item number six, budget discussion. At our last meeting, the board asked the superintendent to look at the budget and within some constraints, come back to the board with some proposed additional reductions in a tiered fashion such that we can review those and further inform ourselves in terms of the work that we take up on Monday to actually move the budget. So with that, I will look to the superintendent.
Thank you. Before I pass out the actual list for you to take a look at and the respective tiers, I think it's important to capitalize on the process that was used. The chairman has alluded to it, but I think it's important for me to tell you that all nineteen leaders on the team, the leadership team, participated in this process. So that's very important to me because they, they helped build the budget you have before you. And so if we need to be about doing some cutting, they need to be about doing that as well, in addition to the director of maintenance. So really, it was twenty people that had a hand to this. I think it's terribly important that when you went around and set some targets, which I must say was very helpful to us, we used one million dollars in cuts as what we were trying to attain. And at the same time that was rendered, we were also told to please avoid the following, important to point out. Avoid any personnel cuts. Avoid three major projects. The roof at the middle school, the track behind the high school, the HVAC unit at the high school, and avoid the preschool to be established at Thornton's Ferry. So those were not even discussed. They were put off to the side, which meant then we had everything else to take a look at. I want you to know that we have come to six hundred thousand. And you're going to see how we did it. And I'm going to say that as you look at the tiers, as we describe them, what I'm going to need for your consideration is, if you still expect that target to, to be hit, then I'm going to tell you what that would mean. And that would need to be done between now and Monday night. But I didn't want the team to go any further without a consultation with the board. Does that make, yes? So to that end, then. Oh, I'm so sorry. I want to make sure everyone has one before I begin. Does everyone have one? Oh, thank you. My other papers. Okay. So I, I also want to commend Matt and Mark because they really were extremely helpful and gave more time to this. Matt is the one who, you know, has prepared this visual, which I think is very helpful. And so if you look at the very top before we start the tier one cuts, you will see what the actual budget increase was, which is that two million dollars. And you'll see then the percentage increase over to the side, which as the budget was presented to you, it wa, it contained a two point nine percent increase. So if you look in tier one, really, this has everything to do with maintenance. And that's how we started. We took out the paving project. I believe it was board member Schneider who alluded to that fact, and we had already. and we had already kind of held, held our sights to that. And then, if you look, you'll see that we went back and with conferring with Tom Tussow, we cut back in painting, um, so that we still have some, um, uh, amount in the painting fund, five thousand dollars, um, but we took out ten. We looked at the whiteboards and said, that's something that we're working on, installation of whiteboards throughout the district, but we felt that we could cut back and do half, so eight thousand taken out, eight thousand left. Um, there was, uh, a postage, um, overcharge, Matt can speak about that, that we realized needs to be adjusted, this is something that's just come to our attention. I'll have him speak to you about that in a minute. And then, you'll see that one of the things that we wanted to do is to replace, uh, some folding chairs and caddies at Thornton's Ferry, and we said we could put that off for, um, a year. So, um, that entire tier one comes to two-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand, uh, five-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars, which would bring, if you will, um, the decrease down to, um, two-point-five-nine percent. And so, Matt, would you just please cover, um, the postage that we needed to correct?
Yeah, through, through no ill intent or malicious thought, we were, we, uh, were inadvertently, um, charged more uh, for postage in the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen year. Um, the actual expended amount is really overstated by around four-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Uh, we have since received a check just recently back from the, the post office reimbursed, they're kind enough to reimburse us for that, that amount. And when I took that out of the expended, cause I do a three-year average plus a three percent on the postage, it came out to be around two-hundred dollars less than what we had asked for, for sixteen-seventeen. So, having just found that out and redoing the calculation, Adam and A- actually, Adam is the one who, who brought it to my attention. And then, we dug through our own records and, and found the check and the reimbursement from the post office. It's not gonna be credited back to last year, but it's gonna be credited, uh, to probably a, a revenue account miscellaneous this year because we wanna keep his actual postage expenditure as it should be. Uh, so, in looking, going forward to sixteen-seventeen, we made the determination that he could cut the amount that he's requesting, uh, to forty-three-hundred dollars, which kind of is in keeping with fifteen-sixteen, uh, which is a reduction of two-hundred dollars.
So, as we go into tier two, you will see that, um, tier two, we focus really in two areas. Um, one has to do with looking at personnel, and, you know, we have a running record, um, to know that there will be a cost savings because we have some idea about those that will retire and those that we bring in. And so, we look at that as being a reduction of two-hundred-six-thousand-five-hundred-forty-three dollars. And then, in conferring with John Fabrizio, um, he, um, offered three particular items. One, um, has to do with the split system air conditioning units. Um, we would continue to use the portable air conditioning units, um, so that takes out thirty thousand. Then, you know that we put in the budget, um, based on our past experience, um, one full-time and one part-time, um, para educator, um, to accompany our students at charter schools that need accompaniment. And John feels that, um, just, I mean, based on his estimation that, um, we could diminish this by ten thousand, which is, uh, a part-time para. And then, for his computer software, um, we would take out five thousand dollars. We had planned on, uh, having a some assessments online, and what we would do is use pencil and paper, um, for another year, that was particular software. Um, so, that, with those cuts, that totals two-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-five-hundred-forty-three dollars, um, which would then bring the budget down to two-point-two-two percent. When you look at the tier three, there is a combination of, um, additional equipment to be added, but there are also some repair equipment now here. Um, all principals or directors were a part of this discussion, so you might say, I can't believe that would be in a tier three, why not a tier four? But I want you to know, they looked at all these lines and they could place it for, in three or four or whatever. So, you just know, if you went to see any one of them, they know this, they, they, we got to this by consensus. So, what I would point out, if you, if you want me to, for the public, I will just announce what each cut would be. Um, there is music additional equipment at Master Cola Elementary, that would be a minus one-seventy. Um, a replacement of basketball hoops at Reed's Ferry, that's minus eighteen-hundred. Um, additional music equipment at the upper elementary, which would be an electric piano and those other elements that go with it, that's minus six-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. Um, a particular shelving unit for music at the high school, minus one-thousand-fifteen dollars. Uh, physical ed additional equipment, a circuit training system, minus one-thousand-one-hundred dollars. Two soccer goals and nets, that was for a freshman, um, program. Uh, athletics at the high school, that's minus thirty-five-hundred. Um, software and licensing in the library, I think you remember that Nancy came, Nancy Rose came and talked in terms of, um, we've had a lot of soft re- software requests throughout the district, and so, we would take out ten thousand and leave a hundred-and-forty-six thousand. It just means less software would be purchased. The same is true of periodicals, um, taking out a thousand, leaving two thousand. Um, literally, we would take out fifteen-hundred and not do book binding for a year. Um, and also, um, for just, um, new and replacement titles in the library, uh, we would take out fifteen thousand and leave twenty-five thousand. Um, athletic supplies, you can see there are three lines that are pertinent to the volleyball, the addition of volleyball at the, at the middle school, and we would just eliminate, um, the sport for next year. Oh, I'm so sorry, and the batting cage at the high school, um, we would just continue to use the old batting cage. Um, you can see that, that tier three cuts are forty-three-thousand-five-hundred-fifty-four dollars in total, which really just doesn't bring us down much, we're now at two-point-two-one percent. When you go over to tier four, the last tier, you'll see here that this really has to do predominantly with furniture replacement. So, it's the elimination of furniture replacement for Master Cola Elementary, Reed's Ferry, Thornton's Ferry, the upper elementary, the middle, the high school. Um, as well as, uh, an amplifier for the public address system at Reed's Ferry. Um, the, um, some document cameras and interactive whiteboard equipment, taking out twelve thousand there, leaving twelve thousand. So, we halved it, it just means that we go at a slower pace. And then, from our account, um, we wanted to be a contributor as well with all the personnel accounts. We took five thousand out, uh, from our school district legal services, leaving forty-five thousand in the account. Um, that totals to fifty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-six dollars. When you look at tier one, two, three, and four, we come to six-hundred-one-thousand-four-hundred-fifty-seven. So, um, before you get into deliberation, the one thing I would tell you is, if we were to go back into the budget and adhere to what you had spoken of initially, when we talked as a team, it would mean that we would need to go back and take out all field trips. We would need to go back and look at textbooks, because we have some large textbook expenditures for new courses, AP courses and so on. Um, we, we would prefer not dealing with any supply account because that just, those are important things that we need year to year. But anything that we had proposed to do for a new course or whatever, we would just not, not do that. Even if we did those things, we think we would only get to about seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand. In the beginning, when I came to you, I think back at my budget message in the beginning, I said to you, basically, this was predominantly a level-funded budget. If you took out the four major items, those four major capital improvement projects are the two million dollars. And what this exercise pointed out, and I'm glad we've done it, but when, when you go back to this, this points out exactly what my budget message said in the beginning. And for that, I think it's a valuable thing to have done. But seriously, if you want more, I need guidance for Monday to know what you wish us to do.
Is your hand up, or you're doing this? Okay, Mr. Schneider.
Got it. Wasn't sure.
I'm warming up. Um, first, I have a question. You stated that this, these potential reductions did not impact headcount, yet in the first item... That doesn't sound good. Somebody's spinning outside. Um, you have the reduction of a, of a point-five full-time, uh, para educator.
It's a position that was put in there with the idea that it, it might be called upon, but it's not a person right this minute.
So, but my understanding is, is that for the charter school stuff, that was things that we entered last year? We, we added the things for the charter school, transportation and, and coverage, last year's budget. So, you're saying that you budgeted the amount, but you don't have a head assigned to it? Is that what that means?
Correct.
So, what you, what this reduction is simply is the funding for an extra point-five should we need it? So, if all of a sudden we get next year's students that go to charter schools that need this, the, the stake you put into the ground, we would be half a person short based on your anticipation.
It would be that, and again, I, I mean, we were searching, and so, it would be that we would probably, we have the special ed fund, if we needed to, we would come to you and say, we have this child who just moved in and we need, um, or, or we have a child who needs to go to a charter school, and because we don't have that, we're coming to you for. I mean, we talked about a scenario.
I know, exactly, and the, these were just sort of stakes into the ground because we haven't had to do it yet necessarily?
Correct.
So, you, you sort of, for budgeting and planning purposes, okay, that's good. Now, now I have a comment, and then I'll pass it off. So, obviously, we've just looked at these for five minutes, maybe ten at the tops. Um, things, you know, obviously, the first two items take out the largest hit, and then the second two tiers are lower than the amount we talked about for putting into the capital, you know, the, the, for, um, for repairs. Um, things that bother me that I see on this list are things that talk about, um, delaying purchasing of software, um, doing, um, assessments that are back to paper and pencils opposed to online because we're doing things with smarter balanced and SAT, you know, things that are more online. My, my pers- I, I will look at this more closely, but my first pass is that I could buy the reduction of things that are in tier one because they seem to be not impactful necessarily. And then, what we did last year in terms of the reduction in costs because of the teachers, um, you know, retirees, there's that two-hundred-four thousand. When you get below there, you start, in my mind, you start looking at things that impact the day-to-day operations of the, either the well-being being, even the first thing in the list, the portable AC units. I mean, I mean, it's thirty thousand dollars, so it's, it's a great single thing, but given what the district needs to do in terms of, of climate control for these situations. So, I will look more closely at this, but my first pass is, a- and, and if I went with that first pass, just to give you an idea, all of tier one plus the more optimized budgeting cuts four-hundred-fifty-nine thousand off the, off the budget of, of the total of six-hundred and whatever thousand that you said that you were able to achieve. So, two-thirds of that can be achieved just by those top items, which brings, which, which brings the, the operating budget down from seventy-two-point-seven-five to seventy-two-point-two-nine. Still over seventy-two, but it brings it into a level where I think we've shown some movement in terms of that, so. That's, I just wanted to share my thoughts of having to see this right now.
Thank you. Vice Chair Barnes.
I have actually clarifying questions on a couple of things. On your tier two cut, item number four, which is the SEP computer software, so that's the, um, I think John was talking to us very detailed about how it's a more effective way of measuring students', um, capabilities. And more effective than paper and pencil because they could actually divert and move with the student to really assess certain things, if I'm, if I'm getting this correctly. If that's what we're talking about, it's, I, I would hate to go backwards on.
No, it's correct, it's something that we aspire to do, and we don't have it yet, so, we put it off. I, I got to get across to you that this is not something that we chose to do.
Oh, no, we asked you, I get that.
But, but it's just the way it comes back, I have to push back only because it sounds like, oh, yeah, we can live with this. We were doing, we did what we were asked to do, and some of this, it's more money, and when you're trying to find a million, and it's not there. I am just telling you, this leadership team would try and do whatever you asked it to do. And if I had to come back and tell you, I'd say, no, we didn't wanna do that, and we didn't wanna do that. So, I just have to get across, we're trying to get, we, we wanna do whatever would be in the best interest of a student, and that is something we aspire to do. And yet, because we're not doing it, we just say, we push it off a year. So, delay is the name of the game, that's, if I were to sum up this page or two.
We're kicking, it's a kick the can list.
It's a kick the can and delay across.
And, and the, the reason I wanted to really put light on that specifically is, that's a perfect example of us not giving you the resources to deliver the level of quality education we expect you to do. And I think that's the biggest, you know, when we're talking about those things, we want that vetted. It's not that, um, you brought it to us and, we have, we have to determine whether that's appropriate, and we need to understand the consequence. Again, I'm all about consequence. And I think John was very apparent that this will deliver a better assessment of a child, and by doing that, we can do better in getting the child a plan to have the most successful education in special education. So, I think if, eh, if we as a board are compromising that, that's irresponsible of us. So, we need to know that's what we're doing if we make that cut. So, that's why I'm vetting it, not, not putting you on the spot, what'd you do that for? I know why you did it, I asked you to do it, but it's just, what is the consequence of what I just asked you to do? And that's really what I need to understand. Um, so, that being said, I'm not comfortable with that at all. Um, book binding, it's the one that we always, it always kills me every year when it does come on a cut list because that's a kicking the can, we're gonna bind the book, or we're gonna buy a new book that's cost a lot more than the binding. So, to, to me, that's, that's penny wise and pound foolish is, is the way I look at that, so. When I look at things like that, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense for us to, in my, in my mind, of course, it takes three votes, but in my mind, it makes no sense to consider that. The only one in, um, tier four, I even felt comfortable talking about saying it'd be a consideration because again, tier four was all the furniture replacement, and they're deteriorating every time a kid sits in it every year, so. We're basically, you know, deteriorating, having twice as many deteriorated materials next year to replace, and that's not being responsible to future boards. Um, even if it's the same five people, it's not being responsible to us next year, we're gonna kick ourselves in the, our own, our own pants for that. Um, but the second one, which is school district legal services, um, it goes down five thousand dollars. Is that based on a, like a three-year average of what we've actually used, or will we be, um, cutting a corner?
We, um, gave something from our fund. I mean, we, every year is different. Uh, this year, we're using more legal service than we have, I do an average, it's, so, it's somewhere between thirty-five and fifty thousand, and we felt that we needed to give, so.
Those are my questions.
Mr. Powell, thank you.
As everyone else has said, thank you for putting this together, and I know that it was, uh, um, and a, a group effort, and please pass our appreciation on to the leadership team as well for doing this. Um, the things that have been said before, I agree with. Um, the, the half, um, FTE, if need be, as you said, we can pull that out of the special education, um, emergency fund, that, that's, uh, that's no problem. Um, I agree, we should not be talking about the computer software under tier two. We need to move forward, we, we definitely don't need to be walking backwards on this. Jumping down to team th- or tier three, rather, I have a question on line number six, um, regarding the two soccer goal nets. Just a clarification, the impact, it says no freshman team soccer. Does that mean there wouldn't be a freshman team, or there just wouldn't be a net for that team?
We didn't have it this year, so that's something that's needed, I mean.
The net or the team?
The.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I, I, having some experience with the high school soccer program, um, there was no freshman teams last year, either boys or girls. Um, there were none, uh, this year either. Um, and part of the challenge, um, is not just, I'm saying "um" a lot, is goals. Uh, fields is another, uh, issue, uh, that isn't immediately solved by simply having the goals either. Um, and also, scheduling was one of the issues this past year. The NHIAA sets a two-year schedule, so even if... So even if we had a field, we had the goals, there were certainly interests this past year. The challenge was even then, we couldn't officially get on the schedule. So the target was for next year to reinstitute because the program does have a lot of interest in terms of upcoming freshmen. So, you know, to me, the question is, no freshman team soccer might still be a possibility, right, in terms of fields and transportation and all those things that need to occur to get kids practicing and playing and getting on the schedule. But we certainly ensure it if, at the very least, we find a field and they don't even have a goal, right?
Okay.
So that's how I read that.
Well, I appreciate you clearing that up because that goes exactly into what my mindset, what I thought it was. So that in conjunction with '12-, '13-, and '14 with the volleyball at the middle school, my personal feeling is these are feeder sports. We have, I mean, it's been shown that we have an excellent volleyball program at the high school. We have an excellent soccer program at the high school. And the sooner that we can get these feeder teams in, the better level of competition our students will be able to participate in. And who knows, it may open up into scholarships for them farther down the road. And I think we need to give them every, just like academics, we need to give them every opportunity we can to excel at what they're good at and what they hold an interest in. So I would not be in support of having any conversation regarding those two, or, yeah, those two issues. Other than that, I, the only other question I have is why, and it's probably just a moot point, but the reduction in the cost, or the credit, rather, because of the retirees, why, what was the thought process in not including that in Tier One and putting it in Tier Two?
Okay, thanks. We usually reach a point in the budget where we, we look at, this is an option. We have retirees. We know who they are now at this point in time. And we look at the positions and then we look at historically what those positions would be with new people coming in at a lower portion of the scale. And the delta with benefits and everything wound up to be this figure. So we figured that would be something that we could offer up to reduce the surplus that could arrive in personnel savings at the end of the '16-'17 school year.
No, I understand that. My question is...
He's asking why in Tier Two and not...
Why in Tier Two?
So I would say it's a structural thing. In my mind's eye, if I could, I would have structured it so we did a quarter million, quarter million, quarter million, quarter million. So you can see the first, with just those maintenance items, it was a quarter million. So I used that to help get us to another quarter million, knowing that you cross over. It doesn't matter. But in my mind's eye, it's easier when you're working with a team to talk in terms, especially if you're trying to hit a million, to go quarter, quarter, quarter. And that's, but you can see, that fell apart when I got to Tier Three. There you go. So so much for the philosophy, give it up. It doesn't...
And I appreciate that.
No, and I wasn't sure because we worked on this together. But that's the way, it's just easier when you... I'm sorry. When you're trying to work with a team, you can't start out by talking about a million because it's, really, it's too much.
You gotta take...
But if you talk a quarter of a million right, and so that's the way it's done.
No, and I appreciate your candor on that.
And also, if I can add real quick, when I, when I look at this, it, Tier Two, this is less of a sure bet than just saying, we're not going to pay the front of the high school. Because this isn't a guaranteed definite.
I would agree with you to a point that that exact number might not be a guarantee, but we can always expect that we're going to realize some savings in that.
So far, that's been the history.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? So I think what we'll all do, and I agree with the assessment of the board, I'm guessing you've gotten the feedback that you need from the board that there are tiers here that the board may not even go to. So going further is not something the board desires with vehement head shaking going on to affirm that.
Unless the office pool hits Powerball tomorrow night, then...
I would, I would hope then that we're having a special hearing to accept a gift on behalf, to the district, on behalf of the winner. And so what we'll do is we will take this, and this is very good input, I think, for our Monday discussion on moving the budget. So thank you. I'll reiterate what the board said. And thank you very much for going through this exercise and pulling this data together for us. So that will take us to item number seven, public participation on agenda items. Seeing no public, we will close that. And I will take motions, why not? Vice Chair Barnes and Mr. Powell motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries five zero zero. And what is Mr. Marcus's opinion?
In favor.
Thank you, sir. Good night, everyone.
Just going to look at that information in terms of, of what I would say, motorist behavior, driver behavior at a given time on a given day with specific conditions. So it's just, even though there may not be any complicity to, meaning whatever the recommended number is...